You're still gonna use that worn out thing, eh?
What's that?
Talking about film.
It's just gotta last two more months. Come on, last two more months. I don't know if you saw it yesterday, but I was scrolling through and every other page came up.
Oh, and the fucking comment? Okay, sure.
It's like, oh my god, I've done hard stories and couple of years. I got mine, what more I can do. Yeah. I'm just spending money on that.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I'm a little bit of a fool.
Where's my ballot?
I mean, I get that. Probably a good idea to come up and talk about it. Yeah. Huh? Where's my ballot?
I go, well, just get him to see how much they want. I think I said it.
Yeah, not meant so.
He knew it was, didn't he?
Yeah. Yeah, it wasn't, not cool.
And picked up about a, you know, thousand dollar.
That's exactly right. No, that's exactly right.
Okay, let's see. There we go.
Clock's a little fast, isn't it?
Yeah, it's not quite time.
Here we go, someone set that clock.
I know.
Be a total pain to get it. Ten twelve.
I know.
That used.
No, it's the sheriff's.
Good morning and welcome to the October eighteenth Board of Supervisors meeting. Please join me in the flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and please be seated. Okay, we will start off with Supervisor Matters. Uh, Supervisor Vanderpool.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know last week I was very excited about a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that I was presented with and that was presiding over the wedding of my sister-in-law. That took place on Saturday and I have to say that I thought I did a fantastic job. Um, I'm kidding, I got a lot of compliments and actually the venue where the wedding was said asked if I would be willing to have my name added to the list of vendors that they offer their brides and grooms to see if they want to use that, so.
That's your wife?
No, no, my wife did not work there. Um, and then also on a personal note, I found out this morning that I, for the first time, am an uncle. So my brother gave birth to his new daughter, so that was.
Wife did.
His wife did.
There's two news.
Yeah, there are two news, so. Um, so that's very, very, very exciting, so.
Yeah.
Um, and then one event that's coming up that I wanted to make sure that I highlighted, it's always a great event, and that is an event benefiting the Tulare Historical Society, and that's the Taste Treats Event that takes place on Monday, this upcoming Monday, from six to eight thirty at the Heritage Complex. It's always very well attended, um, and I think for the last, this will be my eighth time that I've been a bartender at the event, and they still keep asking me to come back, so I think I'm good at something.
Let's test some good jokes or something.
Yeah, good, good jokes, um, and I look forward to that event, it's always fun. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Cox.
I'm sure you're added at the bottom of that as a profit and loss number though on that bar event. Okay, let's see, uh, on Saturday I attended the Tasty Arts Event in Visalia. Great event, there were, it seemed like thousands of people there as we walked through. Uh, the step-up portion of that that was sponsored, the Urban Art Contest, they took the entire lumberyard this year, which was, I thought, pretty amazing. In the past, they've had three or four artists there doing this spray can paint, but there were probably twelve stations set up this year, so it was pretty exciting. They were excited about it and they had said they're definitely all going to come back and do more, just driving by that facility, you know, a year or two ago and seeing how it looked, and even though it's been spray painted with spray cans and in the graffiti art, it looks pretty awesome. I mean, it really is art, so I think they've enhanced that downtown area just by having that building used as a backstop for their spray paint art. So that was pretty good. Yesterday Supervisor Vanderpool and I attended the, uh, the subcommittee meeting for the Transit Maintenance and Operation Facility. Um, I thought Supervisor Vanderpool would have jumped on this. I think we've shaved off one year, I'm gonna look for John, one year of the time it was going to take to do that facility, and by my estimation, we've shaved almost four million dollars off the budget. We'll be, uh, building that facility and, uh, the majority of it will be in a metal building now instead of a block and other things, uh, then there'll be a wooden stucco frame administration building. I think we'll be able to build that out, uh, for the original budget, so pretty excited about that, uh, this committee process. I hope this board continues that as they move forward. It's very helpful for staff, it's very helpful for the consultants to see what this board is, is willing to pay for and what this board expects for, uh, you know, for what the money we do pay. So very successful project, I think, uh, you know, the, the staff did a wonderful job. We met two weeks ago, I think we kind of scared them, they came back this time really prepared with some great numbers, great proposals, um, I know I'm going on about this, but the, the process really works, and we're going to get a facility out there built, I think, a year faster than what was gonna happen, and we're gonna save about four million dollars. So I want to thank John and his team, you know, Ross, Reed, those guys, I don't think they're here, but we had some, the staff that really stepped up to the plate on, uh, on that facility. Last night we had our first interviews for the lead program here in Visalia. Tonight we'll be, we will be in Tulare for that, and then tomorrow night we'll be in Porterville. We had, uh, almost fifty students show up last night, be interviewed, and we put thirty-eight of them into the program. Plan is to put, you know, thirty-five to thirty-eight in each program, knowing that some students will drop out. The great opportunity, we're, uh, seems like we're reaching our goals that we've set there for those juniors and seniors in high school as well. And then I will, I'll defer to Supervisor Ashida on an event that's happening on Thursday, and that's it.
Thank you. Supervisor Wesley.
Thank you, Sherman. Well, I just want to say that the great event on Saturday was the opening of the county's newest library in London, and that's London, Tulare County, not London, England. And Gary Soto was there, Robert Esquirdo, who was the visionary for the project, was, was allotted by everybody that he was there, had a great turnout, I think we had over two-hundred people in attendance, uh, great press, and, uh, it was just a really wonderful event and a major, um, benefit to that community, and I think the people there are really appreciative of that, and I, I commented, I said, you know, you look at this facility, there's no fence around it. This is your facility, you, you need to protect it, you need to own it, you need to be responsible for it, and people were very responsive. I want to thank Ben Reese was there, our RMA Director, our District Attorney was there and he spoke, and Reed Shanky did some beautiful work on the sign that was there, and thanks, Reed, for that, and just a lot of our partners were there. Um, we had a resource fair, our public defender was also present, we had Sheriff's Office, Probation Department, Health Human Services, just a great turnout of people and just a really, really nice event, and the weather was perfect on top of it all. Um, this, uh, this Friday I have kind of an interesting experience, I'll be presenting at a, a law conference, a continuation of the bar conference up at the Tenaya Lodge, speaking about water. Wonder why? Uh, and the question is, is Flint, Flint, Michigan, could it happen here? And of course, it's a little different situation here, but obviously water quality is a, is an issue and a concern everywhere. Uh, next week I won't be with the board, I will be en route to, um, Washington DC with the Air Board where we're gonna be having a conversation with the federal EPA. I don't know what we're gonna do when we talk to them, but threaten them, I guess, I'm not sure, but anyway, we'll be back there talking about our, our air quality concerns, particularly as it relates to, um, PM two point five, and that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Ashida.
Last Friday I attended the annual Aqua Meeting that's in our region, and it was held in Visalia. It was very informative, we talked about the new groundwater management plan and other issues. Yesterday I attended a meeting at Fresno State where they announced the fact that Fresno State is now going to have a degree in planning, and that degree's been absent from Fresno State for many years, and it's the only degree offered in the state college system in the valley. I think a lot of times we find that there's a shortage of planners, uh, that stay in the valley, a lot of them go to metropolitan areas. PG&E donated ten thousand dollars to, uh, this program to help start it, and one of the main people behind getting this program is Supervisor, Supervisor Correa. And it happened that his daughter is a planning major in San Luis Obispo in Campolino, so it was a grassroots effort, um, by Supervisor Correa in the Fresno County Board to raise enough funds to get this, uh, degree put in place at Fresno State. This Thursday I'm speaking at the Boy Scout Annual Awards, uh, Citizens Awards Banquet, which will be held at the Wyndham Hotel, and it's honoring Bob Lutickens. And those of you who know Bob Lutickens, he is Mr. Boy Scout of not only Tulare County, probably the nation. Bob wanted to do something a little different, usually when you recognize somebody, you have a lot of speakers say how great the guy is. Now, I think Bob's won enough awards, he's heard that enough, and he asked several of us to speak on what scouting has meant to us. So there'll be about four speakers, it's really tough when you have five minutes to say something, but, uh, that's how Bob is. Scouting has meant so much to him during his life, and he's given back to so many people through scouting. I think one of the things I'm gonna talk about is my scoutmaster, Reverend Luke Fritz, who was probably the most influential person on me besides my father. Bob has been so influential throughout the county and to so many people, he's multiplied one troop into many troops and cub packs, and he's made a tremendous impact on our youth in Tulare County, and that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, tomorrow I will be, uh, going out to Carl Smith Junior High in Terabella, and, uh, Carl Smith was the principal at Terabella Elementary when I went to school there, so.
Still alive?
No. No, he's, he's passed on, but, you know, I'm no spring chicken either. Anyway, uh, that's gonna be a fun event, it's gonna be a step-up health, kind of a health fair event, starting at three and running till six o'clock, so be going out there. Thursday, uh, I'm gonna have a California Hot Springs, kind of a town hall meeting, you know, I do one every year up, up at Thuley in Camp Nelson. This is something I've been wanting to do ever since I got on the board, so this Thursday we'll be going to California Hot Springs, bringing all the resources in, Cal Fire, County Fire, County Roads, uh, anybody that, that, uh, has the resources that that community uses, uh, will be in attendance. I think even Southern California Edison will be there, I was talking to Cal before the meeting, so, uh, those are always good meetings, uh, people tend to wanna, uh, kind of bring their frustrations up if they've got any. Of course, the, the, the thing we just went through up there with the, with the Cedar Fire was the fact that they had to evacuate that area, and so, uh, those folks are well in tune with what's going on, and that will be probably one of the things we'll be talking about is, is, uh, I know Charlie Norman, our police fire chief, is gonna be up there, and of course, we're gonna have the county sheriff's office up there too. So anyway, uh, that, I'm looking forward to that meeting, and it's always good, it brings everybody together, it brings people from the community together, and they can speak to the resources, and if they have anything they want to talk about or something they want to bring up to speed, then we get it done at that time. Uh, Sunday we're having a, Scott Goddard, the Highway Patrol, uh, Commander at the Porterville Highway Patrol Office is having a meeting up in Springville to introduce their new mountain officer. We just put, I just put one in place he had, and it was a good name for him, for a, a mountain CHP officer, was Jeremiah Johnson, which I thought, that was easy for me to remember, uh, but he's, he's coming down, they're putting a new one up there, of course, I know the new one going up there, that's Tyrone Bowser, and I've known him and his family for years, so, uh, looking forward to kind of going up there and seeing what's going on, because that's a big, important thing for that community and for the mountain communities is knowing their highway patrolmen, and I really like to know my highway patrolmen the way I drive.
I know you.
I just, I just don't like to be giving out signatures, that's, anyway, that's all I have this morning. So, uh, now we'll move on to item number two, Presentation of Proclamation Recognizing October two thousand sixteen as Italian Heritage Month in Tulare County, and Supervisor Ashida will be taking care of those honors.
On behalf of the board, I'd like to present this proclamation recognizing October two thousand sixteen as Italian Heritage Month in Tulare County. It's been five centuries since Christopher Columbus sailed from Europe to the New World. Since that time, generations of Italian Americans have helped shape our society and steer the course of history. Over five point four million Italian immigrants immigrated to the United States between eighteen twenty and nineteen, nineteen ninety-two. Today, there are over twenty-six million Americans of Italian descent, making them the fifth-largest ethnic group in the United States. That's something I don't think we, we think about, is how large, uh, the Italian, uh, people are of, uh, part of our population. The principles of the lodges that we have, we have two lodges, we have the Lodge in Visalia and Lodge in Tulare, is founded on the principles of liberty, equality, and fraternity. The Lodge's first mission was to accumulate all the Italian immigrants in the United States to help them bond together, learn the language, and become citizens. Today, these lodges support charities and scholarships and language and culture. Therefore, it be resolved that Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize October two thousand sixteen as Italian Heritage Month in Tulare County and encourage Tulare County residents to learn more about the history of Italian Americans. Now, at this time, I'll have Nick say a couple words, and David, would you come up, please? Do you want to come over here?
I'm Nick Donatonicola, President of the Enrico Caruso Lodge of Sensivili in Visalia. The Sensivili Lodge was formed in New York City in the early nineteen hundreds. The first Sensivili Lodge in California was in Fresno on September twenty-second, nineteen twenty-two. Our Lodge was formed on June eleventh, nineteen twenty-seven. Next year, our Lodge will be celebrating their ninetieth anniversary. Italians immigrated here for the jobs and the opportunities available to them. They came over with the encouragement of their family members and friends that were already here. A lot of the Italians in this area came from the Hill of Italy. In Visalia, there were streets where Italians from the same area of Italy lived next to each other. On East Larry Avenue, where a lot of Sicilians, on South Bridge Street and North Court Street, a lot of Italians resided who came from the Hill of Italy. In Visalia, a lot of the Italians here came from a town called Putignano from the Hill of Italy. There are more than a hundred families that came from that town in Visalia. Pete and Carmeline Jada and Ida and Lawrence Romanazzi were instrumental in forming a sister city between Visalia and Putignano. At the northwest corner of Hall Avenue and Main Street is a replica of a summer house from the region. Italians assimilated and have contributed considerably to Tulare County and the United States. They brought their religion, their customs, and their work ethics with them. Our first president at the Visalia Lodge was Luke Bianco. His grandson, John Bianco, has just been recently named a Superior Court Judge for Tulare County. I'm honored to be here to accept this proclamation for the Italian community of Tulare County. We also had a member come all the way from Chicago to see this presentation.
David?
Hi, I'm David DePauley at Roma Lodge, and we, we're mostly out of Tulare, but we have members as far south as Porterville and Terabella. So I just wanted to get that Terabella in. Our, uh, most of our Lodge members are from central to northern part of Italy and, and came, just as my grandparents did, in, in the early nineteen hundreds. Uh, my granddaughters are the fifth-generation Italians to be in Tulare County. Most of our, uh, members, uh, probably ninety percent of our members in Tulare County or Roma Lodge, uh, were farmers, and, uh, those families in our Lodge continue to be farmers, uh, uh, today. It, it's kind of unique that Tulare and Visalia are so close, there are about fifty-five large lodges in California and Nevada, and, uh, Tulare and Visalia happen to be the two largest, uh, lodges in the state, uh, and, and we basically share boundaries, so that's pretty unique to the state, and I, I think that shows, uh, something for the Italian people here in Tulare County. But again, thanks for honoring us today, and we appreciate your time.
One thing was pointed out, uh, what David said and Nick said, is that when people came into this country and they immigrated to this country, they kind of settled in communities that were from, people from their communities and their home countries, they settled in communities in the United States, in communities. They all kind of, uh, came over here and lived together because they were familiar with each other and familiar with the, the, uh, uh, jobs that they had, and it was like a big family, and that happens to all of the immigrants that come in this, this country. So congratulations, and it was a pleasure to present this proclamation.
I would like to have all the Italians stand up, please.
All right.
Thank you, Alan, for presenting that, that was, that was a great deal. I, uh, we did have quite a few Italian people out in the Terabella area, I went to school with the Canelas and Simos, uh, look back on that, and there was a lot of Italian, and they were farmers in the Terabella-Ducor area, actually.
Okay, let's move on to item number three, Presentation of Proclamation to Adopt the Week of October twenty-third through thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, as Red Ribbon Week in Tulare County. Supervisor Pete Vanderpool will be.
I, I think that we've got a presentation first, so we'll let you go ahead.
Good mor- good morning, Board of Supervisors, thank you for allowing us to be here. My name is Gabe Soldania, Expanded Learning High School Program Multi-Site Director with Pro Youth and Expanded Learning After-School Program. The Tulare County Red Ribbon Planning Committee would like to thank our partners, Tulare County Prevention Coalition, Pro Youth, National Council of Alcohol Drug Dependency, and Family Healthcare Network. The plan, the Red Ribbon Planning Committee consists of community partners and many motivated youth representing local efforts and prevention programs throughout Tulare County. For the last seven years, Tulare County Office of Education and Tulare County Health and Human Services Agency are collaborating to spread the Red Ribbon Week message throughout Tulare County. Red Ribbon Week has become one of the most visible prevention awareness campaigns observed annually. It gives opportunities for schools, organizations, and communities to make a visible stand against alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. This demonstrates our commitment to a drug-free lifestyle through the symbol of the red ribbon. We have prepared a video for you that was created by Tulare County Office of Education. We would like to present the video at this time. We're having trouble. This year, the committee members selected to adopt the National Red Ribbon Week theme, "You Only Live Once, Be Drug-Free" as the official, as, as the official theme for Tulare County. At this time, we would like to present to each board member an invitation to the Seventh Annual Red Ribbon Week Celebration and present you with a red ribbon gift bag. Celebration takes place on Wednesday, October twenty-sixth, from four to seven, at the Visalia Convention Center. In closing, we continue to thank the County Board of Supervisors for their support, service, and commitment to drug prevention programs. We ask that you continue supporting students and families in discovering the many resources and activities to stay drug-free, not just for a week, but also for life. Thank you.
Good job, Gabe, that was a nice presentation. You know, it was kind of funny yesterday when I was talking to, uh, our chairman, Mike Ennis, about the presentations today, he said, you know, Pete, I'd like you to present the Italian proclamation, you. unite in opposing illicit drugs, young people are much less likely to engage in drug use. And whereas Red Ribbon Week will be celebrated in Tulare County and every community across the nation during the week of October twenty-third through thirty-first, 2016, and whereas to help achieve this goal, the United States Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, the National Family Partnership, and the Tulare County Department of Mental Health, Alcohol, and Drug/Other Drug Division invite all residents of Tulare County to participate in Red Ribbon Week 2016. And now therefore be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the week of October twenty-third through thirty-first, 2016, as Red Ribbon Week in Tulare County, and call upon the citizens, public, and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Tulare County to recommit our community to increasing awareness and drug prevention-elimination activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free state. This is signed by Alan Ashida, Pete Vanderpool, Phil Cox, Steve Worley, and Mike Ennis. Gabe, if you want to come up and receive this proclamation?
Anybody else who's anti-drug, you're welcome to come up. Great. Oh, yeah, gotta get over to the ceiling.
Better stand in front, Pete.
Yeah, Pete's other job is he's a comedian when he's in the off time. Okay, at this time, we will move to public comment. Those who wish to speak to the board on issues but that are not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Can we take action on this item?
Oh.
The chair motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Supervisor Cox, second by Supervisor Worley. Cast your votes. Voting unanimous, thank you. Now we will move on to public comment.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. My name's Hiale Wallace. I'm here this morning to represent the Register of Voters' Office and to remind people that we have mailed our absentee ballots out and our pamphlets, and the state as well has mailed out. We had a hundred and seven thousand vote-by-mail ballots go out on Tuesday of last week, and there's a hundred and forty... I'm sorry, and the Secretary of State has also sent out a very thick state pamphlet with the propositions that are still being delivered. We ask voters to be patient. They should get their stuff this week. If not, they can then call the office on... Oh, shit, a second. They can call the office. We also have a lot of information available online at our website at tulariocoelections with an S dot org, and the actual phone number for the office is six-two-seven-seventy-three-hundred. Okay, any questions?
No, I received mine yesterday, so.
Thank you for doing that. I was asked her to come up and give that, because I know that, like, it was kind of interesting, on Saturday, my wife got her ballot. On Monday, myself and two of my children got their ballots, and so things are still coming in. But I know that I've been getting some phone calls from people saying, "Where's my ballot? Where's my ballot?" And I say, "You've got plenty of time." But anyway, people are antsy, so I'm glad you gave us that further information.
The election is November eighth. It's actually almost a week later than normal because of the way that the days fall, so.
Thank you. Thank you for that update.
Welcome.
Anyone else wishing to speak during public comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment and move on to our consent calendar. Items five through twenty-seven. Anybody wishing to pull any?
Mr. Chair, I know that our executive director from TCAG is here to comment on one of the items on our consent calendar.
Item fourteen?
While he's coming up, I can't. We don't want to pull, but item five, you know, when I first came on the board, Supervisor Ashida and I, the county was actually borrowing money from a commercial institution to purchase cars, and we were looking at a billion-dollar fund and asked, "Why are we borrowing money from anybody but ourselves and paying ourselves back the interest?" So I think this is a continuation of that, where we pay for the cars upfront with, you know, some type of county money. We received the pink slips, and then pay that money back with interest. So I'm glad to see this continuing on. No reason for us to ever go out to commercial money unless it's super-big money, right, Mr. CAO?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just to mention, this is a great program. We need to continue this. We save money upfront, and we save money in the back end, and we get the pink slips today.
Mr. Smalley?
Thank you. Ted Smalley, Director of Tulare County Association of Governments. I want to thank you for putting this on your agenda. We, in transportation, have a lot of tough challenges in front of us, and this contract and Ms. Conway's been very helpful. We gave an example yesterday where she helped with her relationship with the railroad, and after a stalemate, a railroad agreement was signed, and now one of our projects is going up to bid. A lot of efforts to help behind the scenes to go after money despite the challenges going on and working through this. In addition, helping us look at potential CTC representation for the valley. This county has never had a CTC commissioner, and so that is definitely on the table and an effort going on trying to do that. So that's a quick summary. I can go into more detail, but it kind of highlights some of the really critical things going on, and so we, again, appreciate your effort to be a partner again and again with TCAG.
Okay, thank you, Ted.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no further comments, I would move approval of the consent calendar as presented.
Moved by Supervisor Worley, second by Supervisor Ashida. Cast your votes. Voting unanimous, thank you. Okay, we will now move on to our untimed items. Item number twenty-eight, request the board supervisor staff to adopt a resolution to oppose Prop. 64, the control and regulate tax audit use of marijuana. Thank you.
Sam, did you pick the color of that folder, too?
You know, I was gonna make a comment maybe after. It is totally unrelated to the issue at hand this morning. I do like bright colors, and this is all that I had left, so we'll focus on the yellow. Good morning, Chairman Ennis, members of the board, Mr. Spata, Mr. Sims, Samantha Ferrero, Board Representative for your board. This morning, I will be presenting a request that your board adopt a resolution in opposition to Proposition 64, commonly known as the Adult Use of Marijuana Act. I'll provide a brief presentation, including some background on the issue, what Proposition 64 will do at the state level, how it will affect us here at the county level, and then some reasons why we're requesting your board oppose this issue. So backgrounds, marijuana is currently illegal under federal law under the Controlled Substance Act. However, it's generally accepted practice by the U.S. Department of Justice to not prosecute marijuana-related crimes in states that do regulate use. California is one of those states, and there's about twenty-five states in total within the United States that have laws surrounding marijuana use, consumption, cultivation, et cetera. California, in 1996, the voters authorized Prop. 215, which would allow residents in California, no matter their age, to consume and also possess marijuana for medical purposes. In 2003, the state legislature allowed for collectives, which are nonprofit dispensaries, authorized to cultivate marijuana on behalf of its medical users and to sell back to them. However, these are currently not licensed by the state, and that is left to be regulated by counties and cities in which these dispensaries are located. In 2013, new state law has begun to regulate the medical marijuana industry. So that brings us to Proposition 64, and this proposition would allow Californians twenty-one years and older to consume marijuana recreationally. It would allow these individuals to possess up to six plants and have an ounce or less on them. It would also create a regulatory system for non-medical marijuana businesses. This would include creating nineteen different types of licensing categories, excuse me, including licenses for cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, testing, and retailing, and it would also change the penalties for marijuana-related crime. So how would it affect counties? Under Proposition 64, counties would have some control regarding recreational marijuana use. It would allow counties to further enact additional licenses that are different from the state licenses if businesses would like to open in the county. It can restrict where commercial sales can take place. At the state level, it does ban marijuana commercial activity from being six hundred feet within a school, and counties could further impose restrictions on where they're able to be located. In addition, it could completely ban marijuana businesses from operating within the county, and it could impose local taxes on top of the state taxes on commercial sales of marijuana. However, it could not ban the recreational use within the jurisdiction, and it could not ban transport within the jurisdiction boundaries. So we'll get into why Tulare County should oppose Prop. 64, the two biggest reasons being the crime and safety effects that it would have for residents of Tulare County. Tulare County has struggled to enforce the many illegal grow sites that already exist within our jurisdiction on the valley floor and also in our mountain areas. It strained many local resources and also funding to combat illegal marijuana grow sites and the criminal activity associated with them. Proposition 64 doesn't guarantee that these problems would cease to exist, and we could also see more problems coming into rural counties such as ours. Last year, Tulare County Sheriff's Department shut down approximately three hundred illegal grows connected to criminal and trafficking organizations. These organizations bring violence, they bring guns into our community, and they also bring homicide. In 2011, nine of the eighteen homicides were directly related to marijuana grow sites. With the black market associated with this issue, it's not guaranteed that the black market would completely cease to exist when you're getting increased regulation on an issue, and then with a fifteen percent sales tax in addition to possibly more sales tax, that's going to keep that black market alive with individuals looking to purchase and distribute unregulated. The safety matter, in states that have allowed for recreational use, such as Washington, they've seen fatal crashes where marijuana has been consumed. They've seen those numbers double. The proposition, interestingly, does not include a DUI standard for law enforcement to use to determine if someone has been driving under the influence... Excuse me, unlike alcohol consumption, we don't have the... With marijuana, we don't have the .08, we don't have the breathalyzer. None of that is included in this proposition. Last week, we heard from our state lobbyist, Paul Yoder, who had made the point that if marijuana is legalized recreationally, this could become one of the top interest groups in the state. It will allow for mass commercialization of marijuana by for-profit companies, excuse me, and it would allow these interest groups to dominate the regulatory process of marijuana at the state level. We could see it potentially becoming a tobacco-like industry where they're, you know, they would be allowed, it's not expressly banned, that they cannot advertise on television. We could see billboards. And in states like Colorado, they've seen an increase in emergency room visits for consumption of the edible type of marijuana side effects, so, you know, these could be available to children who would be able to, you know, they're lollipops, gummies, candies, things like that, where the amount of THC, the psychoactive component in marijuana, that amount is unknown, and that has contributed to the increase in emergency room visits. So as we heard from our Red Ribbon Week, excuse me, presentation earlier, you know, the effects of marijuana on developing brains could be detrimental to the youth of our county. Excuse me. So at the end of the day, the effects that this proposition has on rural counties such as ours is different than larger urban areas such as the Bay Area and Southern California. This isn't just a moral judgment if marijuana is good or bad. At the end of the day, Proposition 64 would harm rural counties where we do see large grows in our mountain and valley areas. Proponents argue that legalizing marijuana would increase revenue to state and local governments significantly, but the financial benefits aren't the proper basis for assessing the merits of this measure. Additional groups opposing Proposition 64 include Solano County Board of Supervisors, San Diego County Board of Supervisors, Senator Diane Feinstein, California District Attorneys Association, California State Sheriffs Association, and the California Peace Officers Association. So today's request asks that your board join this group in strongly opposing Proposition 64. Take any questions, if you have any.
I don't have a question, I just have kind of a comment. You know, as I get older, I'm more libertarian in my thinking about the government being out of people's lives, letting them do what they choose to do. But the problem with marijuana, as I see it, is that we know there are repercussions from people who are heavy users of this particular drug, and then that falls back upon government services, you know. So I was thinking, what we should do is say, "If you want to be a recreational user of marijuana, you sign a waiver. I hereby give up my right to receive medical treatment, mental health treatment, housing allowances, welfare, you know, whatever, fill out the blanks," because there are consequences to the utilization of this drug. And now people can use it freely, and then the consequences fall back on society, and we're supposed to be able to pick up those pieces and pay for that. So I support this position of opposition to it. I do believe it is a gateway drug. I know that the amount of intensity of the active ingredient in today's marijuana is far different from what it was forty years ago. So I, and we do know that it's not going to go away as a black market matter, because as you pointed out, the more it's regulated, the more it's taxed, that means there will be a number of people who will take advantage of that opportunity to grow it illegally, and we have seen some very serious consequences here in our county, so I will support the point of opposition.
Would anybody from the public like to get up and comment on this in the audience?
Mr. Chair, before someone comes up, you know, what we're looking at here is a legalization of recreational use. I made some statements last time when we were talking about the medical marijuana. I still support my position from that time where there are significant impacts. I see significant impacts with the recreational use that I did not see with the medical use. And I do have friends and family who do use legally for medical issues, and so that's why I took the stance I did last time. I do support this because it's two different issues. There's the medical use, and then there's recreational use. Recreational use, I think, is a big can of worms. This board has taken the position not to be on the regulating side. I would lean toward the regulating side. This board has chosen not to do that, so I'll support the board.
Mr. Chairman? There was an article that came out, I don't know if it was yesterday or very recently, about Calaveras County. Calaveras County Board of Supervisors passed an ordinance to allow the growing of marijuana in the unincorporated areas, which I think the whole county's unincorporated, but they charged a $5,000 registration fee for anybody that wanted to grow marijuana. I made some statements last time when we were talking about the medical marijuana. I still support my position from that time where there are significant impacts, I see significant impacts with the recreational use that I did not see with the medical use. And I do have friends and family who do use legally for medical issues, and so that's why I took the stance I did last time. I do support this, because it's two different issues. There's the medical use, and then there's recreational use. Recreational use, I think, is a big can of worms. This board has taken the position not to be on the regulating side. I would lean toward the regulating side. This board has chosen not to do that, so I'll support the board.
Mr. Chairman? There was an article that came out, I don't know if it was yesterday or very recently, about Calaveras County. Calaveras County Board of Supervisors passed an ordinance to allow the growing of marijuana in the unincorporated areas, which I think the whole county's unincorporated, but they charged a $5,000 registration fee for anybody that wanted to grow marijuana. But you had to go through a background check before you could be actually registered. They raised $4 million just from the registration fees. They thought they were going to get 200 to 300 applications to be registered. They ended up with 740 applications to grow marijuana. What happened was, even with the regulations they had, the sheriff's department eradicated 61,000 marijuana plants that weren't grown legally. So the registration program didn't entirely work even in Calaveras County. Calaveras County is now getting so many complaints from residents that are afraid of the crime, the people involved, the dogs that guard the properties, there's been incidents of warning shots over residents' heads, and it's come to a head to where, probably in 2017, there's going to be a ballot initiative in Calaveras County to ban the growing of marijuana. So just because you, as Board Supervisors, think you can regulate marijuana, it's proven to be a fact that you cannot. What gets me also was when we talked about renewing our ordinance on marijuana, that we had our dispensary, the only dispensary, or one of the dispensaries in Tulare County, say they had 10,000 customers, and we only issued about two dozen marijuana carts. So that shows me that recreational use is a reality today, and the black market will not go away, especially when you add all the fees and the regulations and the cost of doing business legally, that you're going to see the black market flourish, and we will be continuing, our sheriff's department, our public safety people will continually be working on eradicating marijuana in Tulare County. So I really ask for this resolution to be put on our agenda, because I don't see any advantage to making recreational marijuana legal in the state of California. I think it's a detriment to our youth, and if they think the law that you have to be 21 will prevent you from getting marijuana, well, you got to, you're head in the sand. Because I can tell you from experience that when I was a youngster in high school, we used to take weight out in front of a mini mart and give people a can of beer, an empty can of beer, and a couple dollars, they'd say, "Go buy me a six-pack." And they would. So that's the same thing that would happen with the legal marijuana dispensaries. It will reach the youth densely in California. Thank you.
And also, you've got to realize the people that try to, that want to vote this stuff in from these big metropolitan areas don't have to put up with all the stuff we have here in the valley and these rural farm areas where these people want, and in the federal lands, which takes up half of our county. That's where they'll continue to grow this stuff, and we'll be the ones with the repercussions of this whole thing. Would anybody from the audience like to speak to this issue? Anybody else on the board want to make a comment?
Even though I'm wearing a green shirt today, I will move for approval of supporting this, no position.
Okay. Lured by Supervisor Vanderpool, seconded by Supervisor Sheeta. Cast your votes, the votes unanimous. Thank you, Samantha.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Appreciate your presentation. Okay, we'll move on to item number 29, opposition to Proposition 57. District Attorney Tim Ward.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board.
That was a great announcement, Mr. Chair, I like that.
I could have done a Michael Buffer, but...
Good morning, it's a pleasure to be in front of the board again. I want to take a moment and ask that this board take a collective position, and with your unified voice, take a stance in opposition of Proposition 57, which will be on the November ballot here coming up. And in doing so, place the position again and the focus on victims over these offender rights, which is, as you will see, a trend occurring in the state of California. So I'll take a few moments and talk about what is Proposition 57. It is the Public Safety and Rehabilitation Act, has three primary areas. First and foremost, the changes to the parole and early release considerations of state prison inmates. State prison inmates, this is exclusive to inmates here in local facilities. It will drastically change the custody credit award process, which is the manner in which inmates in prison are given credits for good behavior and days that they serve in custody. And you'll see, CDCR now, the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, will have unfettered access to grant in whatever manner they deem appropriate custody credits to inmates serving time. And then finally, the direct filing of juvenile offenders. This is a subtle nuance that's not really being talked about in the mainstream media. It impacts the manner in which District Attorney's Office, prosecutors around the state, are able to file juvenile offenders as adults and prosecute those offenders in adult courts. And I'll talk just a little bit about that, but in all actuality, the first two areas of this give us more than enough pause for concern. Why do we have Proposition 57 on the ballot? In essence, it is a fix for the long-term prison population cap that the governor and the state of California is on. However, as written, there are many conflicts, there are many concerns, and there are a lot of unanswered questions on the implementation of Proposition 57. This next graph will show you, this is the prison population in the state of California going back to 2006, and then the dotted lines project the current population until the year 2020. The first major drop there you'll see coinciding with 2011 is the AB 109, the prison realignment, which, that drop going down, the mirror would be aligned going up, because the majority of those, if not all, of those inmates were shifted onto the local facilities here, and our Tulare County Sheriff's Department did a remarkable job in the way they managed with the facilities they have, that influx of population. Then again, you go to 2014, where we were up to 135,000 in custody in our state prisons. That drop in 2014 is the effects of Proposition 47, which passed. So currently, right now, we are at about 129,000 inmates in CDCR. The current cap that's imposed is about 100, I think it's 135, plus or minus, 135,000. So as we said here today, or as we said in the November 8 election time, the state of California is currently below the cap, and while we understand that the state needs a long-term fix, Proposition 57 is the wrong execution of that idea. The proposition, as you know, is rather lengthy, but there are 27 or 28 words that are incredibly, incredibly controversial. This is the crux of Proposition 57. Any person convicted of a nonviolent felony and are sentenced to state prison shall be eligible for parole or early release after completing the full term of his or her primary offense. And as our CAO will know, counsel, the devil's in the details with the wording and the interpretation of that. And so, full term means the offense, whatever the crime was that's committed that has the longest term excluding any enhancements, consecutive sentence, or alternative sentences. And again, we must realize that full term will not mean full term, because the inmates will receive more custody credits than ever before. Picture's worth a thousand words. If Proposition 57 passes, here's what will happen to the prison population or felons that are convicted in Tulare County. Imagine, if you will, one defendant, he commits a residential burglary. He is sentenced by Tulare County Judge to four years, four years in prison, that is the base term of his commitment. Now imagine a second defendant who commits a residential burglary, and he's released on bail. While he's out on bail, he commits a second residential burglary. While he's still out on bail, he commits a third residential burglary. He's caught, convicted, and sentenced. This inmate happens to have three prior prison terms that he went to prison on. He used a deadly weapon when he committed that third residential burglary. The out-on-bail enhancement would add two years for each of those. His total incarceration term would be 14 years, eight months. That's given the midterm, that's not even the max. Proposition 57 will take the stance that these two defendants should be treated fairly, and I vehemently disagree. However, under Proposition 57, each of these defendants would be eligible for release at the same time, and that is upon completion of the four-year base term that they are convicted on. Proposition 57 ignores the fact that there are multiple victims, it ignores the fact that the second inmate used a deadly weapon, and it also ignores his prior criminal record. Much is made of the term violent or nonviolent, and I'd like to just take a moment and quiz the board on this. Let's think of a scenario of a human trafficker sells a 13-year-old girl into sex slavery, and so I ask you, is that a violent or a nonviolent crime?
Nonviolent.
Under Proposition 57, it's considered nonviolent. Recently, the state of California passed a Californians Against Sexual Exploitation Act a few years ago. Proposition 57 would, in essence, unwind that. Another scenario, a teacher touches the genitals of one or more than one 14-year-old student. Same question, guess what? Proposition 57 considers that to be a nonviolent, and again, it would disregard the number of victims that this teacher would prey upon. Final, imagine the tragedy that would happen if a bomb exploded at a local school. The state of California is dichotic sometimes in how we approach these types of crimes. If the bomb is discovered beforehand, before it explodes, before it detonates and commits that tragedy, guess what? Proposition 57 considers that to be a nonviolent crime. It is absolutely disgusting with the terminology that they're using for violent and nonviolent crimes, and it is offensive to the families and the victims that have had to endure those crimes, and what 57 would ask them to do. There are some other troubling aspects to this. CDCR issued a report, an outcome evaluation report. This is basically a report card of how they did. Nearly 50% of the population that 57 would release have re-offended. In fact, their own report card says, those offenders that would fall under this population of potential for release, they return to state prison at a higher rate than other offenders. So I ask you to take the stance that 50% is not a safe bet. Alternative sentencing. Imagine that same residential burglary suspect who had two prior strikes, and he was sentenced to 25 years to life. Under the current terminology, and we have to go to the plain language of the statute, three strikes are considered alternate sentencing enhancements. And if you look at the definition, the full term excludes consecutive sentence and alternative sentencing enhancements. So, under the plain language of that statute, this individual would be subject to early release as well. Now, there's great, there's a lot of discussion and no real guidance on how you would then calculate the base term for that, but it would basically undo the sentence imposed by, in our case, a Tulare County judge. Elimination of direct filing, there's a lot to that. It would change the process on how we would have to do that, it would put the burden on more court hearings to do it. In the state of California, in all honesty, this would take us back several years, about 10 or 12 years. We had to, as a prosecutor, when I started, we had to do these fitness hearings and transfer that juvenile to adult court when appropriate. So if it passes, it would increase more of the court time and staff time that we would do that. In actuality, we only direct file about 10 cases a year, plus or minus. So in that aspect, this is not something that is the focus of why, but the next part is very disturbing. It would be retroactive to any case not yet final on appeal. So every case that we have filed that's not pending or final on appeal, Proposition 57 would basically unwind that, and we'd have to, it appears, start the process over again. The other caveat to this is in 2000, I believe 2012, state of California passed another rule that any inmate or any juvenile offender convicted must be released when he or she reaches the age of 23. So if we do not process as this juvenile into adult court, and they are adjudicated in the juvenile court, they will be released at their age of 23. I ask this board to take a stance, to place victims' rights over top of those of felons. Marcy's Law was passed in 2008. There are three big areas to Marcy's Law that Proposition 57 would absolutely contradict. One, victims have a right to expect that defendants are going to be punished in a manner and length imposed by the courts. As a deputy district attorney, when I practice law, I got asked two questions all the time. One, how many times do I have to come to court from a victim? What do victims ask us? How many times do I have to come to court? And the second question is, how long is he or she going to be in custody? There's no prosecutor in the state of California that can answer that second question, because this proposition would undo the manner and length imposed by the courts. Sentences should not be substantially diminished by early release policies to alleviate overcrowding. That's exactly what Proposition 57 stands for. And victims have a right to appear and be heard at any proceeding involved sentencing or release. There is no provision, absolutely no provision in Prop. 57, whoops, that allows for, through the parole process, for a victim or prosecutor or anybody, for that matter, to be, actually, we're done, I'll back this up, to be a part of the parole process, whatever the parole hearing, early release hearing is that CDCR has yet to publish, there's no indication, there's no requirement that prosecutors or victims have a right to be heard on that. I saw early in the courtroom that we have Captain Fosno and Captain Gonzalez from the Sheriff's Department present. I know Sheriff Pedro could not be here this morning, but he stands with us on this, as do every single police chief in our county, and we ask you to send a unified voice that victims' rights matter, that the public safety of Tulare County is a concern. We've done, we collectively in law enforcement have done a good job with keeping our communities safe. Overall, crime is static in our area. It's not really up or down. However, there are some troubling trends. Auto theft is up, theft-related property crimes are up, gang crimes and some violent crimes are trending down, DUIs are trending down, that's a good thing. We have every reason to believe that Proposition 57 would return those, I will say, violent inmates to our streets, and that trend, we all fear, is going to reverse and go the other way. So with that, I would ask you to take a unified voice in opposition and pass a resolution in opposition of Proposition 57.
Supervisor Vanderpool?
You know, thank you for that presentation, Tim, and as always, whenever we ask you to present in front of the board, you do a very thorough job, so, thorough, long, yes, one of the same, but no, you did an excellent job, and truthfully, I really appreciate your advocacy for victims' rights. You have been a real champion for victims, and it's a shame that in the state of California, considerations of jail overcrowding outweigh those considerations for victims and the rights that they should have, to know that the people that perpetrated a crime against... rights that they should have, to know that the people that perpetrated a crime against them are not being held accountable for that crime. And so I am absolutely with you. We need to do whatever we can to shoot this proposition down to help keep our communities safe. It's a difficult job that you and all of our law enforcement personnel in this county have already. This is just going to make it even more difficult. So I definitely stand with you, and I encourage the rest of the board, which I have no doubt wanted to say.
Supervisor Cox?
So who's supporting this? You know, I appreciate the, you know, the time you took to lay this out for us, and I'm thinking, what person in their right mind would vote yes?
Governor of California.
This was placed on the ballot, if you remember. It was placed on the ballot initiative just as a juvenile justice act, and it solely dealt with the direct filing of juvenile offenders. One district attorney in the state, she supported that, that's Bonnie Demontis in San Diego. And she promised the governor that she would support that measure because of trends that she was seeing in San Diego County. If you remember, at the last minute, after the entire public comment process was over, the governor, so the answer to your question, Russell Cox is the governor, amended the language, added everything else for the prison release standpoint. So who's in support of it? Bonnie Demontis has not retracted her support, and I respect her position on that. There is no other district attorney in the state of California that supports it. The majority of law enforcement officers in the state of California are opposed to this. The list of supporters is very, very short. And online, you can see the difference. The Stop Early Release, which I'm on the regional chair for, stopearlyrelease.com, we've got pages and pages of people in opposition, but we only have raised about $300,000 in opposition. The 457 is, you could probably count the people for it on one or two hands, and they've raised several millions of dollars. That's what we're up against.
It's amazing, I'm going to refer to your chart here, the timeline. You can see, you know, the tremendous drop in the prison population. Well, I feel like we've dodged the bullet here in Tulare County. We've handled those prisoners that came back here, handled them well. You don't see every news on the night, oh, another AB 109.
Correct.
Guy did this or that. Fresno is ripe for that. They are, I think they're bursting at the seams with the problems caused by those releases, but we've dodged the bullet. We, I think we've done really well, but if we're looking at another potential, I'll call it a dump from the state, you know, how many can our county handle and not be exploding at the seams like Fresno is? It's unfortunate that the state is supporting things like this and dumping them back on the counties, but we really have, I feel like we've dodged the bullet, but we can only take so much.
Right.
You can only dump so many back into the community early in where it explodes.
So it's a, it's a very subtle nuance, and you're absolutely correct. Our Sheriff's Department's done a phenomenal job in how they manage prison population. The board's done a good job securing a future of inmate population with the facilities that we're building, but it could create a new, a new mindset for prosecutors. So just, there are a lot of felony crimes that are state prison-eligible that are not mandatory state prison. Every other day we go to court, we're asking for those offenders to be sent to state prison. If Proposition 57 passes and they don't then reach down for the local prison population, our prosecutors may go to court and ask for local prison time, because that sentence could be served in its entirety in our local prisons, our local facilities, not subject to those early release requirements. That's going to increase our sheriff's department's population even more. It is a dire, dire proposition, and a path that you would put us down.
I see as a train wreck.
Supervisor Wordley?
I was just going to, you were asking the question maybe rhetorically, but at the last, the CSAC Board of Directors meeting, this governor came and spoke at length about this particular thing. And I think as a, at the end of the day, I think the CSAC took a no position position, not supporting it, not opposing it. His take on it was that in times past, parole boards had more discretion over releases of prisoners, and that he was basically kind of going back to that earlier time, and that he had the confidence that the parole boards would not release people that ought not be released. Because someone's subject to further release doesn't mean they will be released. That's still within the purview of the parole boards. But the one thing that struck me was that, you know, the real reasoning behind all this was the prison cap. And so, we know the state has to maintain a prison cap, and in that regard, I appreciate your information because it was just sort of stated categorically that we're seeing an uptake in prisons. Well, what you're showing is, no, we haven't, and we're only talking about potential projections. Now, I don't know what those potential projections are based upon, but one thing that strikes me is increased population. So as the state gets bigger...
Correct.
If you have the same number as a percentage, you're going to have more prisoners. Well, that just argues for the fact, we probably need to build some more prisons. I mean, because you can't keep growing the population of the state of California and think that whatever you have today will be sufficient for tomorrow. The other thing that strikes me is that we are also closing a lot of private prisons or contracts outside of the state of California. And this is a very interesting money issue because the prison guard union is very powerful in California, and we now, it now costs us, I believe, $70,000 plus per prisoner in California. It used to be $60,000, but when we released the population, when we reduced the population, we didn't close any prisons. And so what's happened is, it actually costs us more per prisoner today than it did before we started releasing prisoners. The average, I remember some years ago, the average cost of a prisoner held outside of California was like $26,000 a year, or something like that. And we're paying 70. So if we need to get our prison guards down, I would say contract out of state of California, contract with private enterprises, because we can probably do it for a whole lot less money, and then we don't have a problem with the cap. And I think your points are well taken as far as the other risks that are associated with. And I think, I appreciate some of the concepts of the proposition about, you know, giving people more credits for going to the trouble of getting their degrees and taking different classes and things to try to improve themselves. I think they should be rewarded. But as you say, as you point out, it's a very broad category of what's violent, what's not violent. You know, like stealing a car is not violent, but what happens if there's a baby in the backseat? What happens if the guy driving that car, as we so often see, ends up running into people in that car, as is being changed, or running, or, you know, killing people in that regard? So I support your position, and I think we should take an opposition, but it is a, it is a bigger issue for which there are other answers besides this proposition.
You're absolutely correct. And again, we look at what's going on in the state of California. This is a voter-driven initiative. It did not go through a public vetting process, and sometimes that's what you get on the ballot when you try to bypass the legislative process and let the legislators handle and knock out some of those details.
Supervisor Sheeda?
I remember that Governor Brown, the last time around, was instrumental in passing the Prisoner Bill of Rights, which has caused us a tremendous amount of headaches and cost to our local sheriff's office and the Board of Supervisors. I'm from Strathmore. I remember that prisons were built punishment, weren't built as a reform school. And there's still an element of punishment that the victims expect us to provide to those perpetrators. I think this law is, it's going to financially impact this, not only impact this, but I think it puts our deputies in our jails at a higher risk, because the prisoners we're going to get are higher-risk prisoners than we were used to in the county jail. And I think that may be somewhat evident today in some of the jails, that these inmates that we're getting are different than the ones we traditionally have. So I'm 100% against the proposition.
I am too. And, you know, I, the thing that I think about all the time is the death penalty. Why do we not force the death penalty?
Well, you know, Chairman, you'll have a chance on the November ballot to make sure that happens. There are two competing measures, Proposition 62, which would completely abolish the death penalty in the state of California, and Proposition 66, which a lot of my peers worked on, and it is a mend it, don't end it. We all agree in the middle that the current death penalty system in the state of California is broken. Not just broken, it's expensive. Proposition 66 is a mend it, don't end it with a lot of reforms for those. So as your counsel, I would advise you to vote yes on Proposition 66.
Well...
Yeah, I guess for public comment.
Did anybody from the Sheriff's Department, anything like to say anything, or anybody from the audience, or?
For approval, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
Moved by Supervisor Wordley, seconded by Supervisor Cox. The votes unanimous for opposition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
And Tim, thank you also for being in London last Saturday. It was good to see you there.
Thank you. Well, that finishes our open session of Board of Supervisor Matters. Do we have need for a closed session? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for being here this morning.